I have a motion to open the meeting, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second it.
The motion passes.
We're going to move the OIA roller to the top of the agenda. This was, application was discussed at our work session. And we had not heard from the applicant in some time and had decided that if we did not hear from them, that we basically would dismiss the application. They'd have to renew all of their work to get started again. And the deadline for hearing from them was this meeting. And we received a letter today stamped into the building department as of today with a request for an adjournment. So I'm terribly sorry for you guys who showed up for the public hearing. I think it's not respectful of the applicant, of people's time to have you have to come here and at the last minute adjourn. Though on the letter, it does not state when they would like the adjournment till.
I would suggest therefore then, the default would be the next meeting. So it would be your July, I don't know what day that is of the month, Kathy.
July 1st.
July 1st meeting.
Twenty twenty.
I mean, basically what they have said they are going to do, just for your information, is amend the site plan to remove their request to expand the existing structure and bring the parking lot into conformance with the 1997 variance approval.
Nineteen seventy-seven, I think.
Nineteen seventy-seven, variance approval. So that's what they're working on. And as I said, we really can't do much about it. I apologize for a waste of your time and ours. So do we need to vote on adjournments?
You need to vote to grant the request of the applicant to adjourn the application to the July 1 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the OIA roller.
Excuse me, Roy. Is there any comment from the public on this?
Would you like to make a comment?
Well, I'm Jeff Bradman. I'm glad I didn't wear a tie today. That's my first comment. We, you know, I objected to the adjournment, I think, obviously. But, you know, my suggestion would be that the board deny it without prejudice because they never have put together a complete application and given you all the, I mean, any of the documentation that you need really to begin. And I think it puts the board in an awkward position. And I can't see any good that can come of you adjourning the case because there can be occasions when the time that goes by on a site plan approval is, turns into a default by the board. Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but that is a possibility. It just seems to me, you know, as a matter of orderly procedure, and I'm speaking as if, not only as an applicant in front of boards, but as a former planning board attorney, that it just makes more sense to say to them, you know, "We're going to dismiss, we're going to deny you without prejudice. You can put your application in."
We discussed the point that you made about the, if it keeps dragging on, at some point, the applicant can say that the board has been the one dragging it on. So we have gone on record as indicating that it's not our intent to have this drag on forever. In fact, it was not going to drag any farther than this meeting had we not received this or some response from the applicant. So we're fully aware of the danger that you bring up. And I believe we've gone on record to make sure that that will not occur.
I understand that, and I don't want to belabor this. I'm just, I just, you know, from my standpoint and just in terms of handling things in a predictable and orderly way, when an applicant appears in front of you over a period of six months or more and doesn't have the application together, just, to me, it makes sense to, you know, pull the plug on it and just say, "Get your ducks in a row and come back." That would be my request. I leave it to you. Thank you.
Can we do that?
Excuse me? A vote on, I think, you want to reiterate your motion, restate it?
I made a motion to, at the applicant's request to...
Grant the request of the applicant.
To grant the request of the applicant to adjourn the OIA roller to the July 1 meeting. And that is for site plan review.
Correct.
Will we go second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So, first item on our agenda is the tennis court application from Douglas Taylor, 101 First Neck Lane.
I have that file in my office. Due to other issues this afternoon, I didn't get a chance to get that decision. But however, the board could grant that this evening, subject to my submission of the written form of decision. I think everything was in order.
That would be great.
I think everything was in order, Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I missed this one. Do you remember the date of the site plan, Gil?
The last revised plans. The Board of Appeals approved it on May 23rd. And let's see, okay, the site location map was last revised May 6th, done by Squires. It was a radius, 200-foot radius map, last revised May 6th. It's a landscape plan prepared by South Fork Gardening and Landscaping dated May 9th. Intend copies of a engineering plan prepared by Century Tennis, March 12th.
What was the date of the landscape plan?
Landscape plan.
Beau, I have them all, I'll give them to you.
Dated March 21st and then revised May 9th.
A motion to approve the application of Douglas Taylor for tennis court pursuant to the terms and conditions of the site plan, last revised May 23rd, 2013. The landscape plan by South Fork Gardening and Landscaping, last revised May 9th. And the engineering report of last revised March 12th. And also subject to submission by council of the formal written decision.
I'll make a motion to approve that as read.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The public hearing section for John R. Punnett, application 220 Hampton Road. This was...
In the file is the resolution approving the amendment to the site plan and also extending the joint approval of the amendment and the site plan to the regular meeting of June 2000.
Sure, there's a decision, there's a resolution.
Approving, yes. Actually commending the, also noting the support, well, of the board, for the applicant to have basically succeeded in this endeavor to access that residential parcel from a residential street and take that access, A, away from the commercial part of the land and also the access of the residents to and from Hampton Road. Because I can't think of many other places in the village where that could have happened and you would have had that isolated little piece of land that would have enabled that to be what it is.
So we need a motion to...
Approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of John Punnett.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill, there's an extra copy in there for you.
Okay, subdivision review, OIA associates, which has been, I don't think it's adjourned to 6/13.
Today, 6/3.
Today, yeah.
Is there, I don't know if there's any requests for an extension beyond this. Is Pam, is there anything in the file on where?
John Bennett. Oh, oh, oh.
It would be my counsel to, based upon the history of this, to, in default of the applicant, making a request to adjourn it for one more month to the regular meeting of July 1, with the proviso that council write a letter to the applicant stating that this has been an extended application and a resolution and a closure of it is requested.
On the April meeting, he asked it to be adjourned, the April work session, he asked it to be adjourned to today.
Right. There's been no adjournment subsequent to that. So again, it's, this has now been an extended period of time, and I think the board has been very patient with it, but I think it's time to go on record as requesting a, either a conclusion of it by the applicant or, you know, the board to dismiss it without prejudice. So I'll write a letter to the applicant with your permission.
All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn the OIA associates to the July 1 meeting with the direction for council to send a letter to either expedite or to dismiss without prejudice.
Correct. And this resolution is based upon the lack of a request this evening by the applicant to adjourn the matter further.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Site plan review.
Didn't get finished with a VOD, so request that be adjourned for all purposes to the July regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Southampton Hospital, there's a timing issue that they're waiting for a ZBA approval, but that didn't happen. And Mr. Bruin's not here. Does anybody hear from the applicant for that?
I think it makes sense to formally schedule a public hearing for this. It was voted on last month, but for some reason, it wasn't noticed, or as far as we know, it wasn't noticed. And so we should probably do that again.
Make a motion to adjourn it to the 7/1 meeting for a public hearing?
Is that correct, Beau? Kathy, is it appropriate to have to schedule the public hearing? Do you think?
I think it was, I'm not sure why it didn't happen. So, you know, it may have happened because of the building department, or it may have happened because last year in the attorney's office.
There's been some gaps of time with Diane over there, but Wayne should have picked up on that anyway.
As the last meeting, we adjourned it to June for the public meeting, and because of the ZBA, it wasn't done.
Right.
And Beau was to write a letter to the ZBA to say that we, you know, agreed with everything.
And also that we gave him a neg deck.
Yeah, but we got the neg, yeah, we got that.
But I, we don't know if the ZBA is done.
To my knowledge from our discussion last week is that the matter is still pending in front of the ZBA. And while the hospital may be anticipating a resolution, favorable resolution or decision from the Board of Appeals at this month's meeting, which will be the 4th Thursday of the month, that has not yet happened. So Kathy, to schedule it for July means some degree of contingent thinking that they will get an approval.
Well, there's no reason why we can't get public comment in July, even if there's no decision from the zoning board. And if they don't get...
Well, other than the fact that there could be conditions, ZBA approval, that somebody might want to address, and without the benefit of that, they wouldn't have the knowledge of what the decision really was.
I guess it could be held open in that case. I mean, it was supposed to be tonight. That's the only thing. If it doesn't happen tonight, and it doesn't happen in July, then it would be...
Well, if it was supposed to be tonight, if the ZBA was in.
But I know that they feel that the time is of the essence.
They actually, I was at the ZBA meeting, and they had requested a copy of the, our neg deck, which we know exists, and a note from John Bennett saying that the fire marshal was satisfied with all of the work that they were, was ongoing there. And Wayne...
From Wayne or John Bennett?
Wayne.
From Wayne.
You said John Bennett.
I'm sorry. And Wayne appealed to them, saying that they've got a grant that is a timely issue. So in light of all that, and I think the ZBA would meet before our next meeting anyway, so people would have access to the ZBA decision at that time before the public hearing.
Well, the only reason, I'm thinking, if they meet on the 4th Thursday, and our meeting is July 1, so that my thought was, there's not a lot of time to disseminate such a decision if it does happen. But there's no reason why we shouldn't, given the circumstances, then go ahead with a, schedule the meeting.
Right.
It may, at least as far as the procedure for the village goes, the meeting can be scheduled and pursued. And if the applicant decides they, it doesn't want to do this, then they can waive it.
Okay. So I will make a motion to...
Adjourn for all purposes.
Adjourn for all purposes. And to schedule a public hearing for the Southampton Hospital.
For July?
July 1st.
Yeah, the board is going to meet the 27th and two business days, a business day, two business days later, the planning board. So that's why it's a little tight.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the Gerald, Gerald Rosengarten, application 15 Pelham Street and 148 Moses Lane.
Mark Schipper, AEC Engineering. We prepared the application for a zoning law modification. Gerald Rosengarten. So in this case, we were doing a zoning law, a small zoning law modification such that the side yards meet the zoning regulation. There was a slight oversight of the building department when they approved the project. So with this zoning law modification, everything falls back into place and we meet the side yard requirements.
We discussed your application at the work session, and our engineer consultant felt there was an issue that maybe this wasn't even necessary in terms of that line. Was that, no, that was Kathy's partner.
Chick, yeah.
Chick.
Jim.
Chick. He said that it wasn't even needed.
That you moved the line, that you moved the line 15, five feet, but that the...
You still have the 10.
Basically, it's still the same.
But if, the reason we moved the lot such that the size of the lot falls into the next column, which is only 10-foot side yard versus the 15-foot side yard.
So without doing that, you end up as a 15-foot.
Exactly. So that's why we did it. And since Jerry owns both sides of the property, both properties, there's an issue.
Is there anything on the other side of that property right there?
No, it's vacant.
By changing that line, the issue that comes up in my mind is that when you go in for an application, you look at the old file map for use of property. So if you change that line, will you jeopardize any grandfather rights you had through the health department because the lot lines have changed from the original 81 map?
It's a very good question, but in this case, though, it's not an issue because we are increasing the size of the lot. If we were reducing the size of the lot, yes, you would have a point, but in this case, we're increasing the size of the other lot. If I may, there was never anything on that lot. When I purchased that lot from Bob Lawrence, it was a vacant lot, and has been ever since I was out there. Which is 20 years ago.
Well, I had an issue with, I think I made the comment at the last meeting, saying, I don't, it looks like it's two separate lots.
These two separate lots.
No, there's three separate lots, because there's a, can I get one of those maps?
That's a tax, yes.
But that's what we go by the tax map, right?
No, there's a school district line that's through there, and that creates 13.2, which is the 300.
So is it, then, is it...
13.1 incorporates that area of 13.2 into the 13.1 that's in front of your board.
So that's the footage that's shown.
Is correct.
The separate tax lot for 13.2 is only a, it's a technicality.
Okay.
Because of the school district.
Okay.
There are a few parcels around where that happens. Where if you've got the school district line going through a legitimate build a lot, there are two taxable entities there.
Right. But I, this memo that we have is basically saying that it's not...
He has one.
Subdivision.
That it's not the, the policy of the board to downsize one lot in order to make it conform. Is that correct? Is that how I'm reading that?
No, not really. I have a memo in the file, a two-page memo, which we'll give you this evening, in which I've concluded that the board should not hear this application because it seems to be involved with the zoning rather than subdivision work. My question to you is, why, why can't the owner comply with the, what with the setback requirements as the lots presently stand?
Okay, so what happened is that we were actually...
No, no, I don't want to know why it happened. I want to know why the owner could not comply today.
I have a 10-foot existing side yard on the other side. The existing house has a 10-foot side yard.
Right.
The plans...
And you need 40 total.
Right, so which means it would be 30.
Correct.
The plans that went through the building department and the architectural view basically were 10, and the sky exposure plan met the requirements.
The crimes for what, the north side or the south side? How could the north side comply?
Because it does, a 10-foot.
It's pre-existing.
Yeah. The other side would, was planned also with sky exposure plan.
Well, that would be 30 feet.
No, 10.
Why 10?
On the plans, on the plans, the house was designed to meet that requirement.
Right.
John Forster saw that. That was on 10, it was 10 and 10.
You're looking for a side yard, we're not talking about the pyramid law, we're talking about the encroachment into the side yard by the building itself. Why can't that be met? Why could not that addition be so designed that it met the side yard requirement of 30 feet?
Well, the end result would be a house that I wouldn't build. Had I known that that was 30 foot as opposed to 10, it was...
What do you mean, "had you known"? You're charged with knowledge of the zoning code.
Well, I'm not an expert as an architect.
Nobody said you are. But as an owner, you're charged, who drew up those plans?
My architect.
And he should know what the setbacks are.
And he met with John Forster and got over it. And the basic thing is, it went through, and then they saw the different, they saw the 10, 30-foot yard, 30-foot. And what happened was they stopped the work at that point. They said that this is not going to be approved. That's why I'm here. Now, I own both parcels, so we're talking about, I think, 1,000 feet that I'm taking from one to meet the requirement of 10-foot side yards as opposed to 40. Now, I'm told that even if I combined the lots, I couldn't do this renovation or any renovation without having the 40 feet on my north side.
Who said that?
Building department. I mean, they said basically that I would need 40-foot side yard on that side. So basically, it would be that I just tear down the house and just...
I don't think that's correct.
Well, I thought that's what he said.
Sir, I'm not in a position to hear what somebody else said.
I know, I understand.
Say, "We're here to deal with the facts." My decision is, in my opinion to the board and my counsel, is that this is a zoning matter, not a land planning matter. And that the preferable board to seek first relief is the Board of Appeals. If something is involved with that, where that is not sufficient, then maybe the planning board would be an avenue of relief. But at the moment, I don't see this that way.
I think that's a very good point, and in normal circumstances, I think you're absolutely correct. But in this case, because one property is vacant, and because they are owned by the same person, by the same individual, at that point, there is this alternate vehicle, which is to modify the zoning law. In a normal circumstance, you're absolutely right, that normally, there would be relief from the zoning board of appeal for waiver. But in this case, we thought it was a simpler avenue, and that avenue was actually even suggested by the building department.
Well, I think you're right in saying that is a simpler remedy, but I don't think it's the correct one. And I think that what has to happen here is the zoning board is uniquely qualified to deal with these issues of the setbacks, to deal with the appropriate sighting of buildings on lots, and I've said that in my memo. If this, if these were two vacant lots, and somebody wanted to put, and Mr. Rosengarten wanted to put the house as presently configured on one, and wanted to shift the line over, I think that the planning board would be the board of first impression, if you will, on this. But given the fact that there is a house already there with pre-existing non-conformities, I think that the Board of Appeals is uniquely qualified to address the issues, whatever contingencies might be available, whatever history that has to be dealt with. This board does not deal with those setbacks, issues, pyramid law, or anything else. And I think, therefore, it's my conclusion that this matter go before the Board of Appeals and see what happens with that, if it's necessary thereafter to seek. And by the way, if the Board of Appeals did design something or resolve something with the owner that involved a lot line modification, then this board has the recommendation of the Board of Appeals to do so.
Well, I think that it's, I think it's a very valid point, and I think it's, you're right, and we could certainly do this, and we certainly discussed. But in this case, for simplicity, and we're as a small community, we think that sometime, you know, and the simplicity of the issue here is such that maybe if you have an exception...
This board, sir, all due respect, this board really doesn't know how simple the issues are. That's my point. And this board is not designed to delve into the history of the zoning and the improvements on the properties the way the Board of Appeals is.
And the Board of Appeals usually handles a dispute where the building inspector is purported to make an error?
Uniquely qualified to review the procedure of the building inspectors involved in this and determine how this happened and what is the best way to resolve it.
No, I understand, you're absolutely, here we do have a piece of paper from the building inspector saying that, "No further construction without planning board lot line modification approval."
And he may have meant, he may have meant to take some of the land from this lot to add to this, so that way you could have the proper setback.
Yeah, I mean, at the best circumstance, the Board of Appeals...
If you take some of this lot and you add it to this lot, then you can provide the required setback of 40 feet overall.
Making a lot smaller to conform to an older or a sub-sized lot code isn't something that should have come before us.
Yeah, I hope you understand that. So we don't want to, we don't want to do that to begin with, and this board does not want to set a precedent for that type of response to something like this.
I understand, I understand, exactly.
And again, it's much, much better if the Board of Appeals did decide that an appropriate remedy would be to move the lot line, again, than to come back into this board, having been to the Board of Appeals, having a written decision from them, in which they would undoubtedly recommend to this board that the lot line be modified.
Or even leave it the way it is and grant the variance, so that you leave the lot intact, rather than make the lot smaller so you conform to a sub-sized lot zone.
Well, if I may, the architect made a mistake, and it's, the amount of square footage we're talking about is minimal. And since I own both properties, we're talking about a minimal situation in which the building department was...
a minimal situation in which the building department was involved, and my architect was involved, and it was a mistake strictly on, on the square feet we're talking about. And, and everything you're talking about, I, I understand, but it's truly a hardship to me, which, which, I don't know, that matters to the law.
Dangerous phrase to use.
Right, but it's, but it's truly a hardship to me on the mistake, because it was so minimal. I mean, they thought, I'm talking about John Forster and my architect, thought that this was a 10-foot, but overall 20-foot, and the existing was 10, and they needed 10, and that's how the plans were drawn. Uh, what turned out, obviously, is they made a mistake, and I was always, you know, this is six months in the planning, so I was already down that line, and as it turns out, I was stopped, and that's why we're here right now. To go to the Board of Standards and Appeals is another step, which is a hardship. Uh, it's a financial hardship, and it's something that, um, you know, I have recourse with the architect, I have recourse, you know, I don't want to take that recourse. I think it's a very simple, I, I say simple, you say it's not so simple.
I say, no, I said, we don't know how simple or complex it is, we don't have the facts in front of us.
Well, in fact, I think clear-cut, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, you're saying, your interpretation of it, we, we'd need to hear Mr. Foster's version of this, and, and may I say this, and I don't mean to be flip, two wrongs never made a right, and I don't think three wrongs ever made a right.
And we have a huge issue of setting precedents.
So if there have been all these problems with this before-
So the next guy who comes along says, well, you did it for this guy, and all of a sudden, we're in a very tough place.
If I brought to the next meeting, John Forster, would that, well, I mean, the only-
Well, you could, you could, you could, you could be in the Board of Appeals by the next meeting.
What?
You could be in the Board of Appeals by the next meeting.
And that's really the right, uh-
I don't know, I don't know how long, see, I-
It is for hardship, that's, that's the big case.
See, I have no idea how long that takes.
Well, it take, it's, they, as soon as you get the application in, they hear it that month?
And then we have another month.
Well, you may have several months, we'd have to have a public hearing here, they don't have to have that requirement, this could take six or seven months in front of this board.
I'm sorry.
But, but it's really not the right board to come to.
It's not, it's really not-
By the way, there's only, I understand, I, there is only one neighbor involved, actually, because this property fronts on Moses and Pelham, and there's one, you know, we, Pisonelli, it is no problem as far as he's concerned, uh, it doesn't affect him at all.
And those are good issues to bring up to the zoning board, but-
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to be an obstructionist for your, for your, your dilemma here, but again, they're, they're overriding and overreaching issues above and beyond this board and your application, which I find very strong, again, the, this board is not qualified to deal with these issues, and again, we don't want, we do not want to set a precedent for the community that, that remedies like this can be alleviated necessarily by, by first going to the planning board without having the, um, cooperation of the planning board, and as a matter of fact, sir, we've had several instances in the last couple of years where people have come into the planning board, and rather than dismiss the application outright, the board has referred it to the Board of Appeals first, because there are certain circumstances where both planning board issues and Board of Appeals issues exist, and this board has usually deferred to the more specific issues generated out of the Board of Appeals first, letting the applicant, once they've been through that process and gotten a decision, as a matter of fact, you heard it tonight with the Southampton Hospital.
Actually, I'm not sure where they heard it from.
Well, but, you heard the language, you may not have understood, but the point is, there's a situation that required both site plan approval of the planning board, and relief from the Board of Appeals, and this board said, well, the hospital should go to the Board of Appeals first, in which case it wrote a letter, uh, you know, acknowledging the application was in front of the planning board, and commenting on it, and now that applicant, the, the Southampton Hospital, is pending a decision at the Board of Appeals, with the thought that after that, it has to come back to this board for approval, and that's exactly, that's very similar to what you're experiencing here.
I'm sorry, uh, I understand, and we'll do what is necessary. Uh, we took, I guess, the passive least resistance to come to you, um, we're asking kind of like for relief, if you can't give it, we have to take the steps, and we have to.
Correct.
Um, please understand that this was a comedy of errors, which occurred, there was no intention here, and I doubt very much that many situations like this has come up in the village where people want to move the line from their own line. I mean, it's a next-door neighbor.
You're, you're quite unique that the same person owns the contiguous parcels.
I would hate to be here if I didn't own the property, okay? Although I would be giving him property, so you may not object, but, um, if you say they can't, as a board, look at it and give us that relief, then we have to-
We're saying that there is another board that should have the first impression here.
I know, I understand, I understand, I understand.
We're not saying that this board cannot provide relief ultimately, but-
Ultimately, but they have, but they can't do it tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
So, uh, two thoughts here, the board could dismiss it without prejudice, for you to bring it back again, or you could request that the board adjourn it for all purposes, uh, either until the July meeting, well, adjournment for all purposes is probably the better way to go, since you already filed the appeals, but I will mention the memo, it does speak to the fact that there was not a survey in the file of both properties, and the survey on, uh, 13.1 was undated, so that technically, this application, the documents in front of the board now for this application do not comply with the requirements of the application system.
Next time we come, it'll be there.
Yep.
Thank you.
So is it your, your wish to adjourn this for all purposes?
Well, may I suggest that you may, rather than, as you've heard, is July 1st, you cannot make the June meeting of the Board of Appeals, so the best you could do is make the July meeting, which puts you into August, but normally, they, I'm anticipating that they'll at least want a written decision, which is going to put you into September, so you can, um, you can ask for a July 1st adjournment, and come back July and ask again, or you can adjourn it to our August meeting, or the September meeting.
But if, if you're saying, right, I, I think, would we have already gone before the standards of appeal and got a, a written, anything from them, by July meeting?
Normally, well, this board meets July 1st, they next meet June 27th, which you cannot comply with, so you could not possibly get there before the Fourth Thursday of the month of July, and normally, uh, they like to write their decisions, and Mr. De Petrus, who handles that as counsel, you know, they sometimes need at least a month to formulate that once they've had a hearing. So I'm just saying, it seems like adjourning to August is, is a conservatively reasonable thought, and then you can come back in August, and then if you need more time, request it at that time. So I'm suggesting you may want to adjourn this to August, the August meeting of the board, which would be?
August 5th.
August 5th, but you could adjourn it to the July meeting, but I said that's July 1st.
One last shot.
Pardon?
One last shot. Is there any way, I understand the procedures, is there any way this board could give relief to this situation, only because it really is, and I say it with due respect, cut and dry, it's not like, uh, I have any objections from anyone, because I'm the neighbor on one side, two streets are the neighbors on the other side, and-
Do you think you, you, we would be setting a precedent to, to allow somebody to make a lot smaller, to conform to a regulation of now a non-conforming lot? I, I think it's a dangerous precedent to start, because you're, you're, you're giving property to one, but you're taking it away from the other, so you're making that one smaller, so it conforms to a sub-standard size lot, um, that-
It's still within, uh, the right size of a lot, it's just going from one line to the other. In other words, the, you can't go, I can't reduce it to the point where, um, the square footage is not a legal lot. It can, I'm not saying-
But it reduces it to this, to, to the point where it now has a different side yard setback?
Right, just, it just changes, um, basically 1,000 or 2,000 feet from one lot to the other, which, if we're, if we understand it, it's a, it's irregular, but it's still five feet for the length of the property, um, and then it would fall within the, within the thing. People make mistakes.
And that's why I think the zoning board is, I think will, um, is, it's the place for you to go in the fir, in the first place, but I think also, they can give you relief of that line without, um, changing the lot line, that's something that they have-
All right, let me ask a question, a legal question. Uh, from the standpoint of asking the board, asking yourself, is there any reason you can see, conceive that the Board of Standards and Appeals would not approve, uh, what we're talking about?
We can't-
We have no way of answering that, because we don't have all the facts in front of us at the moment.
Okay.
So we don't even have a survey showing 13.1, an updated survey.
Well, I'm saying, subject to that-
Well, it's, it's a hypothetical, I'd rather not-
That's what I asked, I asked.
And because, also because the-
I think you're best to have it in your ZBA.
The Board of Appeals may have various conditions on this, that, that this board really is not, uh, does not deal with and qualified really to respond to. It's not just a question of approval, black and white, it's, they may have several conditions.
No, I, I, I understand.
I think we should let this one down.
And by the way, if they did approve it, and change, and recommended change in the lot line, then you'll be back here anyway.
No, I know that, I know that's the step, obviously.
And, and depending on what they approve or don't approve, you'd have to amend your application anyway to come back.
Correct. But you'd have the benefit of, of a decision of the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Need to vote on the motion?
Right, uh, make a motion to adjourn-
Mr. President, did you want August or July?
To adjourn for all purposes to the August 5th meeting, the application of Gerald Rosengarden.
I'll second that.
And that would be at the request of the applicant.
At the request of the applicant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Still on the books. And the last item on the agenda is Pem H. Holdings, at 200 David White Lane. Pre-submission review.
I don't think we've gotten any pre-submission.
And that memo can stay in the file.
And there's no representative from the applicant here to discuss it.
We don't have anything in this file?
Uh-uh. Who's that? I'm sorry. PP2.
F2?
F2.
PP2? That's the 200 David White Lane one?
Hold till June, work session, nothing has changed since the last meeting.
I thought it was in the, well, it's in the file, I didn't have anything.
It says they're going to send this stuff.
It's a, it's a Board of Appeals, uh, decision from February, and, uh, in May, um-
Alfred said they were going to send this stuff.
It just says for Alfred has been, you know, retained to represent them, and that's it, same thing, there was an exact same things that were here last week. She wasn't here. That's right, you were here.
Okay.
Well, and the fact that it's, there's no real application, and you just don't need to do anything about it, if it shows up again, it's-
Yeah, I think on the agenda, it should be put under pre-submissions, though, because it makes it look like it's a formal-
No, but it's still under, it's still under site plan review category.
Under a separate title.
So that would include, conclude all of the site plan review, the remaining, uh, things to be done here is the approval of the minutes from the April 29th, May 6th, and May 28th meetings. Is there any comment or changes by any of the board members regarding those?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the April 29th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second that. All in favor of approving the April 29th meetings? Aye.
Aye.
I can't vote on the May 6th meeting, because I wasn't here, so can I get a motion from those who were here?
I'll make that motion, the May 6th, to approve the minutes, and I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the May 28th meeting, minute?
I'll make that motion to accept my 28th minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The next me, meeting of this board will be a work session on June 24th, and with[1757.63]